2013, call West Mini to order. Item two, roll call.
Here.
Gatcher?
Here.
Strong?
Here.
Item three, approval warrants and claims.
Make a motion.
Item three approved.
Two second.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Item four, approval of minutes last meeting, March 11th, 2013.
You gotta do it, but double check. There was a lot on last meeting.
Did you get speed on the deal that showed in your office? I brought it up here, the crap I've been getting. The same guy, wasn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I thought it would be all kind of crazy crap from him.
Okay.
The deal we came through the other day?
I couldn't find the old ones, we'd already thrown one, but I had to clean my desk off and I found that one because I'm on that left, it's the same guy.
Yeah.
Looks fine to me, I'm with the motion.
So, there shouldn't be a pothole in a D1 or a road crossing, must have old.
There is, there is. There is. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just need to let your jumper know or Kim know whenever that 1:48 actually starts the clock, is that what I need to do to you?
Which one?
This one?
Uh-huh. It starts what, tomorrow?
No. Do I need to let you know when it does because why not pay on it yet?
Okay, yeah, I think it is.
Okay.
Okay, we'll drop down to item eight, discretion possible action regarding Aflac with district representatives.
Yes.
Now you have a vote.
I brought you guys hand sanitizers to make sure your hands are nice and clean all the time and chapstick. It's done, isn't it?
Ah.
One of these days.
Okay, then, sure.
Did we get those combined? Pull your chair up here with me. Did we get those, the two groups combined, Shelley?
I have not done that, no.
Okay. What we, what we noticed on your Aflac bill is you guys do have two different bills. You started this account 100 years ago and so you have Woods County employees under the county highway department and then you have Woods County employees. And so you get two different bills from Aflac. And so what we talked about with the ladies was combining these and just putting them as one. Because I don't know why, whenever you guys started in 1969, they started these with two different ones.
That's been a couple days back.
Yeah. And so is that okay?
I can't remember it.
Can't remember.
You're running for.
Yeah, you can.
Four, where the hell does that go?
Sorry.
Really, what?
No.
Yeah, it's looking half bad.
The minute I said that, I knew it was a bad idea.
It wasn't maybe. Would the thing have been, because of the hours in here being different in the shops, would that have been where they got started sideways?
Well, it's possible, maybe they did something in the courthouse that they didn't do in the road crews. You never know.
I think that was the case in the courthouse one month and then the next month is the way it looks.
As long as that lady back there is happy sorting it out, I don't care how you do it.
Okay.
How's that sound? She got the deal.
Right. And it's okay with you, Chris, is that?
Uh-huh, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, we want Chris happy. We are going to be the ones that are going to come to your barn and bother you, so I do need to know where your barns are. We are going to be the ones that come and take care of you guys and...
That happened not too long ago, is that going to change? Is things changing or are you, I mean, are you going now or are you going to wait until most?
Some things are going to change, but it's actually revolves more around money.
Okay.
Things should have been pre-tax and worked, so not, not initially to...
I mean, it just seems like a...
Two months ago.
Yeah.
Your open enrollment is January 1 and so that will stay the same.
Cool, that's what it is.
Yeah, yeah. We do want to talk to you about the disability that we have in place because we do need to make maybe some changes on that. That's one thing we want you guys to think about. But as far as us coming back out, unless it is for disability, we won't come out and bother you until...
Enrollment period.
Enrollment time.
Okay.
But enrollment time is going to be a little bit different than what you guys are used to because we do have to see every one of the employees. It's not something that we can just say, okay, they're keeping it the same, move on. One reason we do need to, if we talk to them, and I don't care if we talk to them as a group, however it works for you guys, but if we talk to them, then we find out if they have claims. And then also they, a lot of people forget what they have. And if they haven't been talked to, then they don't know what they have. You guys, we do have your cafeteria plan, which we did get your documents, you do by IRS guidelines, you need to have your documents in place. And so we're ordering more documents, we ran her, sent an email and she has a copy of them, but we need to make changes because Helen's name is still on there. And so we need to get her name off of there and make some changes on there. And, but, and so you will have your documents in place, but since we have your cafeteria plan, what a cafeteria plan does is it lets you pre-tax anything that you bring in, either it's dental, we don't even do your dental, or any health insurance premiums that your employees might pay for their spouses, anything is pre-taxed. And so that's why under IRS guidelines, it's not Aflac, it's IRS guidelines, we have to sit down and talk to every single person. If they don't want Aflac, that's fine, but just sign off saying it was offered. It protects the county because then, if it protects the county, somebody can't come back in two months and say, well, I wanted that cancer policy and now I'm diagnosed with cancer and nobody let me see it. Now we have documents that they did, so every year. And they get used to it and they'll come in and say, I want to keep it the same, we already have all the paperwork, Shelley and I do it, we do it fast. And so it just runs, we do Custer County together and we do Harper County, we do Becken County. And so we can get in there and get out, but we do need to see all the employees and I think that's different than something that your guys are not used to.
No, she's seen it.
She's seen it individually.
Mine individually, yeah.
Good, okay.
My question is, there's always somebody of a dozen that's, that's absent that day.
Right.
And we usually send them on our time to go back and get with her, to get straightened out. How do we connect with you because it's a lot further away than 25 minutes?
We can make a phone call and fax this.
Okay, I'm fine.
Yeah, yeah, everybody, there's going to be somebody sick, somebody on vacation, always somebody there, or they're out on a job and they can't come back in, so we can get that whipped out through a fax or, or maybe, or even a phone call. Sometimes if they have Aflac and they want to keep it, then we just write on their per phone call and date it.
We use a truck ram all the show, 1:00, 7:00 in the morning, get them in there.
Okay. We can do that. The other thing is you guys have had some problems with people that have health insurance and they were paying for their spouse, they weren't pre-taxing that amount because they didn't have an Aflac product. And that is a myth. It doesn't matter if you have Aflac or not, you still pre-tax any part of the health insurance that they paid for. Everything is on a pre-tax basis and so we've talked to Chris about that.
Mine's that way.
Yours is pre-taxed.
You have a chance in, the premium on hers, is it?
I think it is.
Is it?
Let me look here. I can tell you.
I mean, it sounds like you know your situation, it's me, but I may...
We've had, there are some, definitely. And we're making those immediate changes. So you're going to have some people that...
You're not on our list.
But that's the people that are on our list. It's going to save money on employees.
Can we look that?
Mm-hmm. That's how many people you have that are after tax and health insurance premiums that they have to pay. We're going to make some happy people, we're doing that immediately.
Well, it saves county money.
More than my life, I didn't make the way, very good.
And the rest of us getting hand sanitizer.
Exactly, yeah. Come on. On the disability that the county has in place, we were looking through the disability that you guys have in place right now and with that disability, one, you have to use all the vacation time and all your sick leave before you can use it. Two, you have to be gone 60 days, is that correct?
Please don't, I wasn't paying due attention there.
I think that's right. You have to use, if you have an employee that gets hurt off the job, car wreck, cancer, heart attack, gallbladder, off the job, they have to use all their sick days and all their vacation days first. And then they have to be off 60 days before any of the disability, you guys pay $9 a month per employee before that kicks in. And then it's going to pay a minimum of 50 up to 2,500, depending on how much their salary was before they, what they get paid, okay?
Paid 50, 50% up through 2,500.
50 bucks, that's the minimum.
50 bucks.
Okay, that's what I was...
That health choice disability is pretty standard for counties, I mean, everybody has it.
But up to 2,500, what do you want, a month?
That's what we had.
Yeah.
That's it. That's, that's where it's going to be paid, $50 to 200 or 2,500.
I don't think ours will pay 2,500 a month.
I think that's what we read in...
That's the guideline, but it may not.
No, it's 60% of their salary is the most they can draw. I went over that extensively. They actually take a cut in pay.
He's had it long experience with it out there in the last year.
Yeah, maybe that is if they have really high salaries.
No, that's just our road hands. But all that, all our disability will pay is 60%.
Right.
Of their salary.
Right, but what they're saying is the max they would pay is 2,500.
Oh, the max could be 2,500.
Yeah, if they're making a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, okay.
The max could be 2,500.
But what it's doing is, is they're just, our employees are only getting a little over half of what they're making.
Right, and that's...
Nothing Aflac comes in and finishes up or what?
We can do, yeah, yeah. One thing we're looking at is yes, we can come in, now by law, we can't pay them more than 68.8% through disability of any type, through the county or with ours. But what we want to look at is doing it starting day one of an accident and seven days of a sickness. And in that way, your employees can start getting money because usually people are back to work in six weeks. And so you're not using any of the disability, what maybe one or two have used it forever. So none of that is really being used because people get back to work, they can't go six weeks without any kind of income. And so what we want you guys to look at is we really want to try to show you how zero days of an accident and seven days of a sickness waiting period can come in and help your employees to where they can have money quicker and not have to worry about their mortgage and car payment and food and kids.
So they won't have that 60-day gap.
Right, right.
But 68% is all they can, but they can draw that on top of their salaries or...
No.
Their sick leave and stuff?
But if, with Aflac and it's up to each county, you make that decision that they can use our disability first and they can save their vacation and sick days. On the, on an accident, like if it was a car wreck, they could start paying on us day one. On a sickness, it's still your seven days and so they would have to go a week without having any income paid. But then after, on the eighth day, if it was a gallbladder, pennisitis or something, on the eighth day, they would get money, not two months out.
Okay.
So that, on the sickness part, the seven days, do they not have to exhaust their vacation and sick leave on that?
That is your decision, most of our counties say no because, you know, the disability you guys have in place says, yes, they have to do that before they can claim on, on theirs. But with Aflac, they don't. And so a lot of the big companies we do, they let us use Aflac first and let the employees save their sick days and let the employees save their vacation days.
I don't think we've ever heard that.
Who's our disability through?
We haven't heard that here.
It's with health choice.
Health choice.
Because we've always been on the idea we had to exhaust their line.
Right, and most of counties do, we, we see it all, it's, it's, it's cheap, you know, it's pretty, it's more of a long-term disability as opposed to ours is right now, short-term disability.
They just immediate help.
And it runs for how long?
Well, we would just run it up to where you guys...
Where the normal disability would take out.
Right.
So basically 60 days.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And this is something we're doing in another county, so they audit her and everything, everybody's fine with this.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Because they, yeah, because they just did the claims through us.
Interestingly enough, we went to Custer County two years ago, we were going through all this with them, no one, and Connie, Connie D was their payroll person for 15, 20 years, nobody at Custer County had ever used that disability through health choice.
Not one.
Oh, we hope nobody has to use that.
You do, but thank goodness, you know, that someone didn't need it earlier.
Yeah, and this is just one that helps the employees get back on their feet quicker because they have money coming in.
So if this thing starts on day one from a car accident or whatever, a broken leg, whatever, how long, I mean, months does it pay? I mean, does that give time for health choice to get caught up and get to going then or what?
Right.
It's for 60 days, right?
It would pay, yeah, they could take it out through the 60-day period and then they would always have to...
Until the standard disability would kick in.
That, that answers, I was just curious, so...
But I think the, the thing to look at is, one, some of you guys on health on disability right now with Aflac, they've taken them out 100 years ago, I don't know how long you've had this disability in play, but some people have a disability right now that runs for 12 months. And so we need to get them off of this and make changes because they can't claim on it 12 months anyway because you can't claim on health choice and Aflac both. And so, you know, you have, you, you could, but there's a percentage that you can't go over and that gets a little tricky.
Right.
So you're working with Chris and to figure that out, who's who on this deal, I take.
Right.
Because we won't know our own employees, we need to see what they do.
Right.
I don't even know what mine is, I can't tell you.
Well, what, how, how much will this pay?
It would pay whatever the employees took out. Everybody has a different amount that they can take out depending on their salary.
Okay.
And so whatever they wanted to take out, they knew, you know, they are just working at the county just because they want to have benefits, but yet they have a big old way in their backyard, you know, they may not want to take out as much as somebody else. But you can take out just a certain percent of your income.
Our guidelines are a minimum of 500 that you can buy per month, up to 5,000. And of course, there's any kind of things there that we have to go in between.
So rates and benefits are both variable.
Right, exactly.
But, but the rest guidelines, crutch here, keep them underneath while they're getting paid and all that stuff.
Well, here's been my issue with this, is why I was, is these people, you can't have anything about anything anymore, even a broken arm, you're talking six weeks. We, the most we can have is 152 hours of sick leave. Okay, well, that's not six weeks. Well, then they go, if they go on disability, that's 60% of their wages. Well, they exhaust all that sick leave before they're back, well, then they start drawing 60% of their wages and they got more expenses when they're hurt than they do when they're working.
Right.
Out of pocket.
That's right, they have the regular bills, now they have all the hospital.
And, and traveling, going to the doctor and back and forth and, and all that. Now, I mean, that's been my big issue. Is, is their expenses go up and their income goes to nothing.
Right.
Yeah, and that's something simple, maybe even like a broken arm, you get a cancer diagnosis or something and it buries people.
Mostly out here too, because you guys are going back and forth to the city.
Oh, yeah, they're driving and the gas and food.
Yeah.
Okay, now your, your Aflac, it starts paying on day one, if something gets broken on, is that taxable income or non-taxable?
No, because we after-tax it. And so they pay taxes on the premium and so it is non-taxable income.
So the 68% or whatever is...
Is non-taxable because if you're just going to get 70% of your income, you want it all. You don't want to pay taxes out of it.
But that's not a bad deal because the time to pay the taxes and crap, they're about the same.
Absolutely.
But they can take this insurance if they want up to match their salary?
Yeah, match their salary.
Well, you said from $50 or from 500 a month up to, up to 5,000?
You've got to be a pretty, pretty high wage earner to get to 5,000. We have a, we have, we have to put people's income in our software and it, Aflac will say, by IRS guideline, this is the max units you can take a month to stay within that guideline.
But I mean, they can't take equal their salary for those first 60 days? It's a percentage then?
One of the things though that we can do, or, you know, you can give us an option is if, let's just say I chose $1,000 a month to get from Aflac, but my salary is normally 1,500. Some businesses, counties, whomever, however you want to label it, will allow their people to use vacation and sick time to get a little bit more, you know, coming in for...
They can take that on top of this. This is that, okay, that was kind of what I was getting.
Yeah.
If they want to exhaust their sick leave, then they can...
Yeah, as long as that's, you know, good with you guys and that's your policy, yeah.
But let this kick in first, you know, day one, so they don't have to wait that too much.
So really what needs to happen, if all this is going to come about, we need to go back to the shops and have a, a re-explanation of this deal because this is a fair amount different than what we've been doing.
It is.
Right.
And like she said, you've got some people on the bill that have a 12-month disability they're paying for and they cannot use.
And then we need to get them to quit paying for it because, yeah. And this is just the brochures that we hand out, but yeah, we can get...
Oh, we, well, we're taking, some of us are taking out this additional Aflac disability that we can't use.
Right.
Is that what you're being?
They all already have it.
Yeah. You can use it, but you wouldn't be able to use it for the, the 12-month period that you have, so we need to back you up.
Okay.
Because if you're getting 60% from this other one that kicks in in 90 days or 60 days, you're getting 60% there, you can't get, if you have 70% with us, you can't claim on both.
Right. Okay, well, I knew better than that, but, but also I, I was under, on my, I probably got it, I don't know, but under my assumption that this was like some other insurance I have, that this pays you a cash fee no matter what.
And that is true.
Now, that's what I assumed.
That is true, on every single policy that's out there except disability.
Okay.
And disability, since it's your paycheck replacement, that is set with the IRS guidelines. And so the IRS comes down really, really hard on disability because if you're an employer, you don't want somebody making 130% of their salary because they're never going to come back.
That's why I was asking.
They're going to be sick all the time. And so this is what protects, the IRS protects employers for this reason.
Good.
And when we sign people up, it says, if you take out this amount, is it going to be over 70% of your income? I mean, it asks that on the questions on the computer when Shelley signs them up one-on-one.
So that'll be adjusted every year as our salaries adjust?
Absolutely.
It should be, yeah.
And that would be done at election time or that done in-house? And when you said it's supposed to be kind of...
Election time or budget?
Often in roll.
Oh, in roll.
Election time for Aflac.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. And that's the reason it's important we sit down and talk to every single person and find out, did you have a salary increase? Did you have a decrease? Did you have, because you're, you're pretty disappointed.
We've never been asked that question, I can tell you right now.
They've been gathering that information elsewhere too, kind of, that wouldn't have to come to us to get that. That could have been come right through payroll and that's clear.
Well, it's possible.
Shelley does the claims and she gets, it's pretty upsetting when somebody has an Aflac policy they took out in 1972 and they just have a claim now and they never did upgrade or anything and they're still making, you know, 200 a month or something, that's pretty, when you need it, you need it.
Well, that, that's a responsibility of your insurance agent to, you know, to, you know, you as a policyholder and the insurance agent to have that face-to-face, whether it's your Aflac, your homeowners, whatever it is, to, to, to visit those things every year, at least periodically, to make sure that you aren't where you need to be.
I'm pretty sure I dropped a policy when I took this because I thought that it was just paid.
You could get both.
Well, I didn't real, I mean, the other policy was, and I know it pays because it's paid on my wife, I used to get a check from. And I, I think I dropped that when I was elected, when I got the option of this because I was under the assumption that it just sent you a check if something happened.
And it will, if you, whatever you have taken out, but there's no sense paying premiums.
I know, but I, I think it was, it wasn't considered double-dipping, it was just a specific amount is what I...
That you would get no matter what?
Right.
For disability?
That's not so.
Well, see, that's where it could have been screwed up, I didn't know there's a difference in the disability and the other policies you have.
Wellness benefit pays that way, it's the example, they pay a flat fee.
Accident pays flat fee, cancer pays flat fee, everything does but your disability.
Well, I know, but I wasn't explained that part, is what I'm trying to say.
Disability is a, it's a whole different cat. And my husband farms in Clinton and trust me, we've had a million farmers plus him try to come in and get disability. Our disability policy is the only policy that we can't sell just direct to anybody that walks in. So Shelley looked everywhere trying to find farmers out here that you could have a disability policy if they got hurt. Oh, God, we found one out of state that was ridiculous, had to send tax returns in and the price was so high. This policy is portable. And so if you do have people that are working at the county and they are farmers, if they quit the county, they can take this disability with them.
Okay.
And so that makes it really important too because it is portable. And then they're covered, if the primary job is accounting and they farm and they get hurt on the farm, then this is going to kick in and pay. So this is just workman's comp covers them on the job, our disability covers them off the job. Let's don't have them go two months without any kind of money coming in. You know, that's what my concern is, is people can't do that.
Right. I mean, 60 or 68% may not be that great, I won't deny that. However, if you start getting it at day one, it's a whole lot better than it is if you have to wait 60 days to get 60 or 68%.
It is after taxes, not bad.
Because you've got a pretty big hole there to fill.
And some people won't even choose that maximum amount, they'll just choose like, well, for instance, there are certain bills in my house that I'm responsible for and there are certain ones that might pace. So I would, when I would look at it, if I sat down, this is how we explain to people, you know what you have to pay out of your paycheck, you just, you just do. Just take that amount out so that you can cover, you know, what you have to pay and it keeps your premiums low. So some people may just choose a $500 a month benefit even though they were eligible for double, you know? So you don't miss it, but yet you're not going to get buried by bills if you don't have something within, you know, that timeframe, so...
And then if you do want to use some sick days, then you do, that's your choice to make up the difference to where then you're not behind when you come back to work.
I think this would be a great deal to offer the employees.
You've got to go sell a film, I might talk to them about it, I don't want to confuse it.
That's not your job, that's ours. I don't want to beat those potholes either.
And I got two right now, I'm going to send up here to run through the scenario, just not today, not Monday.
Well, and like, like Brenda said, there is most especially some people that we need to visit with right now and it's after tax, so it's not a problem with cafeteria plan and it's after tax, so it's not a problem with cafeteria plan or, or the IRS, because they're paying for things they probably aren't gonna be able to use. So those changes need to be immediate. Also, with the pre-tax of the health insurance, I'm not sure how long that hasn't been done for some people.
So you really need the people on this list first, that's who you need to talk to?
No, they're gonna make the changes on the next payroll already, we don't even need to see them, because they're gonna make that, but they are.
That's just the pre-tax though, right?
Yeah, yeah. If these are your people, and they get their check, and they see a big boost in income, they may be coming to you going, why is my check higher? And the thing is, you guys, it saves the county money, because if you look at this, this is pre-tax, this comes out before taxes. And so we have been not doing justice for the county, because we're gonna save you guys money, so.
We really haven't changed the employees' deal, any, they're just gonna get more to, to take home. They, they either get a refund, or, or they're gonna owe it, yeah, right? And their social security. I mean, we've been taking it out, I mean, it's no, we haven't did them anything we need to go back and reimburse them.
No, no.
I better look at that, see if I've got any.
No, but I'm just saying that if their checks are higher, they're gonna be wondering why you gave them a raise and nobody else got one. And it may be, depending on how much they have, it may be significant, it may not be.
Right.
But, but over eight or ten years' time, it's significant, and we've kinda missed the vote on that with communication with.
I could see it'd be real easy, marital status, they'd acquire spouses or something, and right there'd be the, a real prime instance, how it got overlooked.
Well, I think, in, in all honesty, guys, I think that they, that your payroll people and Shelley, they weren't told right. That's just the bottom line. They were not told correctly about how pre-tax works, and so, yeah, we just have a disservice to Woods County and some of the employees because, because they were told wrong.
And thank goodness for these two ladies, because they brought it to our attention, and so now we can make those corrections and get your documents on hand and get everything lined out like it should be.
Then are you gonna look into who's paying on disability that's longer than sixty days, or is there on that project?
Yeah. I, there's probably three or four of them that, and then we can just contact those people because, individually, and find out what they wanna do. But we needed to get this one in place, there's one, two, three, four. It's like there's four of them that have twelve months.
Well, I, I'm not gonna speak for these guys, but if my shed, I, I want, the quicker the better, you can come visit with my guys and, and get offered this to them. Figure out, you need to figure out for sure who's did too much, or who, whatever. But here, you never know when they're gonna have an issue.
Same thing I'm thinking too, I just hope they come back to shop and get everybody.
Right, I mean, and I, I'm sugge, I'm gonna suggest my shed and the people here in the courthouse for sure. I mean, you know, because you, you never know, I've had a stroke, and I've had a, a deal with a gallbladder, a stone, it turned into a pancreas issue, and, and those people, now, they're both back to work, everything's good, but that's still, you never know when that's gonna happen.
My husband got his hip broke at fifty, being chased by a cow, I know, it can happen.
And all of ours are, we don't take blood with us, we don't take any, no, no physicals or anything like that, but there is a pre-existing for the one that had a stone. So anything that they've had, when we put this effective, whatever day we pick effective, anything they've had twelve months prior to that is not gonna be covered until they've had this policy in place for twelve months. So the quicker the better to get them on there.
But we will also tell them, yes.
If you don't want to eat you in twelve months, the policy will figure it out, right?
Right, right. And the first thirty days of any sickness is not covered, so if we put this into effect, you know, April one, any sickness is not covered for the first thirty days, so we just tell them, do not get a gallbladder, or a gallstone, or anything for the first thirty days. But we'll go over all of that.
Don't forget your wellness checkup for thirty-one days.
Yeah, well, you know.
Right.
Really, that's when it shows up.
Exactly.
That's right, that's true.
I've had twenty years, and I used my first wellness benefit this year.
Yeah.
Fifty bucks.
On the accident policy?
Your health insurance?
Well, the Aflac wellness, I almost don't know.
Because they will go back too, and go back as far back as you, if you've had them, or do claims back on that. But that's just, but the thing I wanna get clear is that if they do take this out, zero days of an accident, seven waiting days of a sickness, and they take their part out, can they still, they'll use this Aflac first and not have to use their sickness or their sick days? But then, if they want to, they can, is that right?
Well, that's a policy change we'll have to make, and we can do that, I mean, it's just a.
We can find it in your policy book, it was in the Health Choice guidelines.
Yeah, it wasn't in the.
I'd like, I'd like to see that on policy man from a county that's approved it and got it in writing, so we don't have to regenerate them, we are.
I can ask, I can talk to Custer County and see if they have one, or I'm not sure about Jackson County, they may too.
We've found in the past, Roger Mills County has always been real up to speed on oil and gas and stuff like that, well, they're not, y'all deal with family law, they'll, they have things that are tested.
And we don't deal with them personally.
Who does Roger Mills?
Um, where is Roger Mills personally?
That's where.
Out in Texas, there on the Texas line.
East of Canadian, Texas.
Along that four down.
I think Charlotte Brown used to, we do major.
I know the payroll lady out there.
What, if any?
Well, we're gonna have to be real careful about us changing policies, because this, as far as I'm concerned, the employees are gonna have to buy this, and that's gonna be their option.
Right.
And, and changing anything different.
If we want them to have the option to use vacation or sick leave or not use it, that's probably something we'll have to spell out.
They're gonna go for it, they're gonna keep it.
I know.
They're gonna get, keep their leave hanging, or get.
Well, you wouldn't think.
It's whatever one of them tries when something goes wrong. Come on.
Yeah, yeah.
Spade, spade.
What's gonna be the status of our current Aflac person? Are we gonna have any effect there?
Have you already handled that?
And I just told her at this time not to contact you guys until I came in here and met with you guys, and then I told her I would sit down with her face-to-face, because she just needs to understand where we're going and what we're doing, and we're gonna, we're gonna handle this, if that's what you guys want.
Better you than us. Are you better than us?
Yes, 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 me definitely.
Is, is that, is that a problem, or, I mean, is that?
I don't have a problem with it.
No, I think that's the way to do it, quite honestly, I mean.
I, I ask Kim, because we're being filmed right now, and she might see it before you talked to her. It's why I was just.
Probably a week before.
Okay, I mean, that's.
Yep, so I understood what he was after. Didn't want them to have any.
Surprise.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we just want you guys happy, we wanna get everybody on track, and we want Woods County taken care of like they should be. And a lot of things that haven't been in place, need to be in place for the county through the IRS guidelines, and that's what we're here for. And then just seeing that your employees, they need to be taken care of day one, if they have a car wreck or something. Anything else?
No, but I, is everybody clear on what cafeteria plan does? How, or what, what it's for?
No.
I, I didn't think so, that's why I brought you those brochures, so take off, Brenda.
I can't explain it.
No, okay, no, that's why we have this here. With Aflac, Aflac comes in, and they do your cafeteria plan free of charge. And so it doesn't cost the county any amount of money to put Aflac in. But when you put Aflac in, we do what is called your cafeteria plan. So we do all the plan documents for you, those IRS guidelines, and we keep those in-house for you. If there's ever any changes, even name changes or anything, we make those changes every year, they stay in place. And so if you ever get audited with the IRS, you have your plan documents. What a cafeteria plan comes in and lets you do, it lets you pre-tax anything that, any kind of premiums, health insurance premiums, your Aflac premiums, dental, whatever premiums you have, that your employees take out, that they pay for extra, then all of that is pre-taxed. And they, that is a reason it's very important that we see every single employee, because they may not wanna take Aflac out, but on our documents, we mark that, that, yes, they have their kids, they have their spouse, or some companies, they have to pay thirty percent of their health insurance. Well, that thirty percent can be pre-taxed, and so you're saving tax money as a county. The more that we have taken out with Aflac, the more people you have take out health insurance, all the stuff that's pre-taxed, that actually comes out before taxes, so when the county has to pay those matching FICA taxes, we save you guys money. And so the more they take out with health insurance on spouses and kids, that's why it's so important to have a health insurance in place that is affordable for the families, because if, if you pay for your family on a pre-tax basis, that's saving the county money. And so not only is it important to have a good health insurance in place for your employees, but two, that they could afford to pay for their family, because it saves the county money. Anything with Aflac, it's pre-tax, saves you money. So everything just goes under here, so even if an employee says, well, I don't have Aflac, I don't need to see them, well, yeah, because if they pay any part of their health insurance or anything, it goes on a pre-tax basis.
Yeah, I think I have one of those.
And that is, that is incredible, and so this is why Shelley put this in there, just tax savings for the employer, because it really can, it defines everything that can be pre-taxed under here at no cost to the county. And so that just allows us then to come in and see everybody.
And the only. One of the things that's been happening, we, we think since Kent Johnson left, maybe is that some health insurance premiums, and some dental, and some vision that people pay out of their pocket, has not been pre-taxed. So we have several years of pre-tax dollars that weren't being done because of education, I, I don't know, communication, I'm not sure.
That's probably.
Exactly. But we're, it's fixed today, because she knew better, so that, that's how we ended up being here, is Chris knew better. So, so that, that's what Brenda meant when she said that would be corrected on the next payroll, and people are gonna see a little difference. You'll see a little difference in your matching FICA.
Chris, is this just on the stuff they're running through your office?
Right.
They can still be doing things on their own that she doesn't know about, correct?
Like.
If they wanna do anything else with their dental or something like that.
Right, but if it doesn't come out of their paycheck, it doesn't affect the cafeteria plan.
Okay, that's clear, I'm just curious, so she'll be the end-all, be-all?
She will, and you know what, one of the.
Cause those employees, what I run onto, their wife and they have them, insurers, they don't have a clue what they got.
Sure, yeah.
But anything that comes out of their paycheck, anything to do with insurance or insurance premiums, Aflac, Colonial, I don't care who you're with, it can be pre-tax through our cafeteria plan, we hold the documents. And so that's why we see all the employees, just to make sure that they understand that, and we know, because when we document it on the, on the forms, then Chris can look at it and make sure, oh, they have health insurance, I didn't realize that, it's not on here, and pre-tax that.
Other than life and disability, we don't pre-tax them.
Life.
And disability.
Life and disability, you can't pre-tax.
You don't, yeah.
Okay, I was just curious.
And, and some people do pre-tax disability, and so if anybody ever comes in and tries to say you're pre-tax disability to save the money on the premiums, you can pre-tax disability, but that leaves the county to where if you have one person that claims on it, the county has to pay the matching FICA for the first six months, and they have taxes come out of the check.
So if our employees take this, this disability out, it won't be pre-taxed?
No, it's after tax. Cause you gotta pay taxes on it sometime, and so you're better off.
So they, it won't be taxed when they draw it?
Right.
Right, yeah.
And it's good for the county too, because you don't have to pay any matching FICA.
For survivors, they have party.
But if you draw on any of the other claims, it's taxed when you get it?
No, none of them is taxed with Aflac, all of our products are indemnities, and so nothing is taxable with Aflac. And then, and again, the disability is its own individual burden, and so that's the only reason we always after-tax disability, to save the employees, because if you're only getting five hundred, you darn sure don't wanna pay taxes.
Right, right.
And the county doesn't wanna pay taxes either on it. So we're just looking at, we're the county, and that's our main thing, whenever Chris called, we were just like, well, and then management company called and found out that that whole list of people right there should've been pre-taxed.
Here's the second person, I was told there's, there's tax on death benefits. I was told by an agent on a whole life policy about a month ago, there is no, no tax on a death benefit.
You know, there is, if there is, I, like, my mother taught school in Fordham for a hundred years, and she had a, a life insurance policy with health insurance, it was all part of it. And so it was on a pre-tax basis, and so when she had, it was like thirty thousand dollar life insurance policy, that was just part of it, didn't pay extra for it, it was just combined with it. Whenever we got her life insurance policy, it did have taxes out, because it was combined with a health insurance policy.
And the health insurance is pre-taxed.
So this standalone, is it different guidelines in?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be the scenario here.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
So we're an after-tax out. But I, I asked that question too, because I had never seen it, and they took taxes out. And I was like, whoa, it's a life insurance policy, why is taxes out?
This was that email that had the, that was just on our cafeteria plan, you know, when you sent that? And I was like, what is this?
Oh, my gosh. You know, that's my short rate for wheat.
Okay, very good, very good, I, I thought maybe that.
Oh, my gosh, that's hilarious. You know, some days, I have my incompetent moments too. No wonder you said what, I thought, oh, where's that at? You're getting, at least you knew the court reach, you had to be related to it.
Crop insurance, gotta love it. Glad it came to you.
It's a little different, that twenty-seven page document you were supposed to get.
So are you guys good with us handling it?
Yeah, I don't like Tom, but it sounds great.
Are you good with us coming back out here to take care of you guys and getting it all?
That's what I'm saying, but I mean, yeah, if you're gonna.
It's afternoon, I don't care.
So we set up times, do we need to set up times with them, Shelley, or with? Yeah, that would be great.
Monday through Thursday, seven AM, my shops kicks off.
So you guys have Fridays off?
Sure we do. They're scheduled off, but that doesn't mean we're off. Whenever and all.
But you guys aren't gonna get any more snow, so we're good there.
Saw a big one in April.
Not very long ago.
Are you gonna get more?
No.
They're calling this weekend.
Little chance of a scare, I think.
I think, yeah, I think we're supposed to get rain. We'll take it, it's raining.
I agree. Kim's got my cards, cause I brought her a whole pile.
Okay, you might give her one of Mike's cards, and you guys got one of your cards with you?
Do you just want us to call you and, and set up the time?
She's got some in mind too.
Well, y'all gonna come up here and catch everybody in the shops, and one day in this courthouse, on the next day or something, they'll have to alternate in here, at least they go on its door.
Yeah, I'm making work on them.
Or they can use their one shower, couldn't they?
They could, yeah.
How long you been, how long you been here?
I'd just see if he's listening.
Well, you know, that, that's the thing, we don't wanna disrupt everybody's workday.
We're pretty flexible, I feel like.
And so we are too. Well, and this is just a benefit that I think they'll all really appreciate, and we'll get with funds we need to individually, and you'll get with those.
And you will give with, give on.
What about the, and I don't remember how this is structured now, what about our helicopter rides that they have? Aren't they running that through the?
Eagle Med?
Yeah.
That's a separate deal.
Yeah, it's not through Aflac.
It's directly through them.
Yeah. Do you guys pay for it, or do they pay for it, does it come out of your check?
Well, we pay for the employees, and they have the option of another ten dollars to pay for eBay in their house.
Well, because I think.
Or their fee.
Who'd have thought I had, because it's kinda the same scenario.
And I don't know that, do you, have you ever heard that, the point that they have to?
No, no one's ever asked that.
See, man, I got a new one.
You do have a new one?
Cool.
Do you know what, we can find that out, because that is something that's more popular now than it ever has been.
You got a new one?
A new question.
Yeah, a new question, it's not insurance premium, so I don't know that, but.
It's a form of insurance. Might not be classified as, but it's a form of, and that's how we looked at it here, was.
I think it's a benefit.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a benefit we provide for the employee, and then if they'd like to add to the.
You guys offer a lot of benefits, I mean, that's a great.
Did you blow that, please, that's what we need.
Say it louder.
You really, really do.
We tried. Well, we're rural, and we have some people, our shops that actually deal with the fire, or emptying, or something, I work side by side with them when something happens.
Nobody does one job, do they, anymore?
No, like the oilfield activity, add it to it, and they're just scattered out.
A lot of people get metallized from here, and, and it's not cheap if you don't have insurance.
Right, yeah. Well, that is, that is an incredible benefit you guys pay.
I would be curious to answer that, whenever you get, figured out.
I'll call this afternoon and find that answer out. Because I know that is something new that, that, I mean, you didn't hear of helicopters seven years ago.
Exactly.
And so, but I did learn something new too on the Helvack, because I'm a member of Air Vac out of Oak City, and so I had a client, I think it may have been here when we were here, I know it was, at Plains Plastic, and she said that they had just got a new vehicle, and so she had to call and get another sticker to go on her new vehicle. I was like, I don't have my sticker on my vehicle. And so I called them and asked them, I called the ambulance service actually in Clinton, and I said, you know, do you guys really look for those stickers, or, you know, do I need to get a new one for my vehicle? And the ambulance, the guy that owns the ambulance in Clinton, he told me, he said, you know what, Brenda? If you need Helvack out, we're not gonna look at your car and make sure that your air vac is not.
They're gonna take you.
You're getting what is coming.
It was advertised once.
If they get here.
I trust the people come get me, but they don't.
When you guys hear.
Lately, Eagle Med itself's been a little bit risky.
But you guys hear, just knowing, you guys, with the cancer, with the accident policy, and, and if you have the accident policy in place and you get our disability, both pay. You know, they don't just look at it as paying the one that's the most. And so just know that disability pays with the cancer, pays with the heart policy, pays with the accident policy, pays with everything.
Well, that's good too.
And the accidents on the job as well.
That does double.
So, let's say you're diagnosed with some type of cancer, and you start missing work, maybe full-time, maybe intermittently. When does the disability take out?
On the eighth day, because you have seven days waiting period, the eighth day is gonna kick in and start paying. And so it'll pay until your other one kicks in.
I see.
So it will pay, and then it'll pay the cancer policies, will pay, you know, the travel.
Right.
And that's what I love, you know, growing up in Fordham, I know, we went to Amarillo, and we went to Oklahoma City. And you guys may go to Enid, I don't know, but still, you're probably going to Oklahoma City for a lot of the stuff. You're always having a motel room, we pay motel rooms, we pay for the fifty cents a mile, for mileage, pay to go to M.D. Anderson, and, you know, so there's a lot of benefits out in rural America, and finally, something is good for us out here.
But this disability, just so I'm clear on it, say they want to go ahead and use their sick leave, but. Say this is going to be a definite ninety-day deal. And it's sixty days before. I know that disability, once they, once they get on our Health Choice disability, they can't draw that any of their sick leave or anything because it deducts against it. Will it deduct against this?
No, and the way I understand your, when I look through the brochure, your brochure for Health Choice says that all vacation and dis, or, and sick time has to be exhausted before they can use it anyway, right? Every, every bit of it. So if they, so it's going to be, you know, if they elect to purchase Aflac or any other disability for that matter, they have to still use their vacation and sick time before they can use the, the disability through Health Choice. I mean, that's, that's an option. It didn't look to me like when I was reading.
Right, because they can't draw both when that, I mean.
Right.
Say they took out fifteen hundred dollar a month policy that, that would take care of them and they saved their, their vacation and sick leave. Everything they draw after they get on the Health Choice benefit just deducts from that benefit.
Until they use that up.
Until it's all gone. Which, which is exactly why most of the time the Health Choice disability, in my experience, doesn't get used. Because most people aren't off that long to exhaust all this, you know, whatever sick time vacation, even if it's two weeks.
Well, if it's a six-week deal, they, they share, they, they'll pick up some to make up the difference or whatever. Because it's a big old deduction in, in pay. They can't survive.
That's right.
Without a full paycheck most of the time. And, and they can't draw both.
Right.
So that's one of, that's the main reason it's not used.
And that's the reason that we like Aflac so well, not just because that's what pays our life bill, but because it's usable. You don't have to use, as far as we're concerned, you don't have to eat up everything before that other, you know what I mean?
Right, but they do there on the one we've got and then it, and then it cuts our salary in half.
So little.
And so it really doesn't do them very much good.
No, consequently, that's the reason why, as I said, in speaking with Connie V at Custer County, one person in twenty years have been able to use that. Because you have to be off a long time before. It's way more than sixty days when you think about it.
You know, if it ended up being a year disability, that might.
Right.
Well, you, it's hard to, you have to do something different. I mean, if it's going to be that long, you can't, that'd exhaust everybody's sick leave and, and whatever in the, in the county system if they were donating, you know, and all this and that. And so, but it says in there sixty-some percent is all they're going to draw.
But that's by the federal laws.
Right, that's exactly right.
I mean, nobody, yeah, nobody can get to any better than that.
Right.
But, but my point is, if you can't work and, and you still, your bills don't go away when you can't work. I mean, that's the whole thing.
Right. Well, you have more bills because you still have the same ones and then add it to it.
Well, and that's the thing, guys. The bottom line is it's, it's up to you which disability you want to use or how you want to use your vacation and sick time. You're offering your people some choices here.
Right, and this is a good one. I mean, you know, for that first sixty days to, as far as I'm concerned.
Close that whole, at least the opportunity to close that.
Right.
If you're just off for two weeks in a car wreck, you can.
Well, yeah, if you're off a month, there's no reason for you to be off a month of work. I'm, I'm talking about the ones that need to be. And to come back to work in the hole financially is, is what I hate to see.
Yeah, we do too.
Yeah. And Shelley deals with all the claims in the office. And so it's fine so good that she comes out to Barnes too, because then people know, okay, I have to face with somebody that's actually doing the claims.
Well, that's the bottom line. I do do these claims. I know how it works for people. And I know exactly what you're saying because it, it does vary people. You don't have to be off very, nobody has money to get back anymore. It doesn't take very long to get in the hole.
You got my questions answered. I'm right here for me when you come to the show.
Okay, okay. And I'll find out your answer on the, the Air Vac too, on that ten dollars that they pay.
We'll contact you personally to, to talk about, you know, times and that later.
Sounds good.
Get this done. My name and number's on there if you have any questions or anything at all that we can help you with. And we'll bring cards out to the barn so everybody will have them. We can't make changes on anything else that they have, but we can help with claims, you know, if they didn't realize they had claims or something.
We're, we're sitting here looking at a calendar. We're on the eight counts. What do you think in here?
I know this week in line is totally, totally booked. So next week, I think, next week are we pretty free, Shelley? Shelley and I, are we pretty free next week? Can you visualize?
You know, you guys have.
We got to act on twenty-seven.
Yeah.
So we have a big group in Clinton to finish up the end of March, so it really not be the first week in April.
If we're going to do it in April, let's do it real early. And that first week is snake hunt is this weekend. I'll have employees off here. I'll have some recuperating here. We just have to schedule our activities around. Stay out in the rodeo boat. We might have some customers there.
You're right.
Accident policy, huh?
Snake, that would be bad with the snakes.
Well, I hope this helps you guys.
Too, like you would say.
So we'll get you guys straightened out. And really appreciate you guys letting us come in. I apologize.
Thanks for working with them.
Well, you know, truthfully, truthfully, the, the gold star needs to go to Chris because she, she knew better and picked up on it and she, you know, answered truthfully when, when they got the survey through, through our whole company that does that. So really kudos goes to her.
Hell, I usually throw them surveys away. I get told no day there.
No, don't do that. Don't do that because you don't put this to.
Yeah, I know.
And thank you guys for letting us come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Y'all have good. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Phone calls and that.
I have never seen that, that small.
Well, it's safe to leave it. I'm going to get my two phone calls, but I'll wait if you hurry up.
Okay, how about thirteen, twenty-six, fourteen?
Item five, discussion possible action, drug water, sim gas, Atlas access, midstream select.
Thirteen, twenty-six, fourteen. Is that what you said? That is actually in plan. And which way does it go from there?
It goes to twelve, twenty-six, fourteen.
It still is. It's on East South Two, one point three miles south down.
And then the other one goes to eighteen, twenty-six, thirteen. It goes from thirteen, twenty-six, fourteen to eighteen, twenty-six, thirteen.
That's him.
Okay. All right, let's see. Nine, twenty-seven, fourteen.
Hang on one second here, please. All right, what is it?
Nine, twenty-seven, fourteen.
That's him for sure.
To thirteen, twenty-seven, fifteen.
The public safety group.
Thirteen, twenty-six, fifteen. Right.
Well, it's going from, from nine to fifteen.
You can watch these go if it gets like that.
Yeah, yeah. That's that one after on the road, nine is, and it's on the north side of the road. It's in his district.
And the other one is three, twenty-eight, fourteen.
Oh, that's plan for sure.
Just seven, twenty-eight, fourteen.
Chief count, they're paling everything off on you. They're palming everything off on you.
All that stuff we're putting off is going to come with a check though.
You see the management last week, the checks? That'll be a feature story on roads there.
Well, we, we printed that whole list.
Yeah, she did. I was like, oh my, they even printed all those. There's a bunch.
That sort of emphasizes the public. Well, exactly. They kind of need to know what's happening in the real world. Yeah.
Well, the only thing it'd be nice for them to know is that, that, that everyone of those permits maybe would buy a little rock.
Right.
A five hundred dollar check might be ten thousand dollars worth of damage in the real world.
Not really.
Especially with the luck we've just had. You burn it the whole month while these acquire or fix them or they corrode and it's lost more. That's very possible.
Yeah, you don't walk away.
It's not a moneymaker at all.
Yes. It looks that way, but it's not.
Yes.
When it starts costing. They get tore up our roads.
It helps the cash flow. It helps it go right on back out.
Yeah, it does.
Payrolls, I should bring that today.
Today's the eighteenth. Let's do on that. We'll have to have it by the end of the day. We're going to have to generate everything to the twenty-seventh instead of having a meeting on the twenty-eighth.
What'd you say, what'd you say to do? An early meeting on twenty-seventh?
Yeah.
Have on eight o'clock on the twenty-seventh.
I'm making a motion to predict it one day, Thomas.
Second.
On favor?
Some of days are after, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I don't think they've ever had it. Right there, usually in April, isn't it? Like middle of April or something.
Yeah, I don't know what to do. Well, they used to always have it on Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, so you can hang it down on a Friday, but it's.
And they used to never have them on the end of the month. You know, so maybe that's the only time they could get that motel.
Probably got a better deal at the dang motel.
That's what I'm thinking.
Get that out of their head.
I don't think that's going to happen.
I don't either.
They like it too.
Just have it once a year for a week and be done.
Item six, discussion possible action, detention transportation claim. Thirty-eight dollars?
You didn't get one day?
Nope.
I'll try. I have a box for them.
No, they don't.
Get us a little bit more money back. Taking care of those kids.
No, we have to turn on the little.
Drains on the county. Once you get there, I'll tell them what to call us.
I know.
Item seven, discussion possible action. Inventory resolution.
Do we just take any action on that? Okay, all right, okay.
I mean, we didn't. The detention?
Okay. We have a motion for approval?
Yes.
Second.
On favor?
We need our motion. Is that what you're saying? Okay, that's what?
Item seven, discussion possible action, inventory resolution for perks server and battery backup to sale to Alphafa County.
That's our old server and battery backup.
You're selling it to them?
Uh-huh, Alphafa County, so that they can use it for their kill probe.
I see.
So what, did you outgrew it or what?
We had to get a new server quite a while ago because we outgrew it. But this one has got a lot of, I mean, this is really big for Alphafa County, more than they have on.
How much are you getting for?
Twenty-five hundred.
I'm just curious. I don't know much.
I make the motion.
Second, I'm following.
On favor? Now, item eight, I guess we have no action. We're waiting on that basically, right?
Right.
Item nine, any business? I'll take that as a no. Item ten, prove his proof blankets?
Yes.
Second, on favor?
Sorry, I was reading. I'm having sticker shock over all the overtime I paid. I've never seen it compiled yet. Oh, I know there's a bunch, don't get me wrong, but I had her doing that FEMA thing and that assuring my little test tabulation deals, you know. I get a guy that's got a hundred and thirteen hours of comp time on that deal. I start looking.
Item eight, a motion to adjourn?
Yes, second.